It is seven o'clock and I will call this public hearing to order. Bear with me, I'm a little bit out of balance. I have had some eye stuff today and one of my left pupil isn't quite back in balance yet, so if I slip on a word or something, it's because I'm not focusing. City of Virgens, notice to public hearing, notice is hereby given that the City of Virgens City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 21st, 2009 at 7:00 PM in City Hall pursuant to 24 VSA 4385. The Planning Commission has prepared a municipal plan, a development plan pursuant to 24 VSA 4384. Below is the statement of purpose, geographical areas affected, and the table of contents for the purpose, purposes, yeah, municipal plan of the City of Virgens. Statement of purpose, it is the intent and the purpose of this municipal plan, development plan to clearly state the objective policies and programs of the City of Virgens to guide the future growth and develop of the land, public service and facilities, and to protect the environment. Geographical areas affected, the entire area of the City of Virgens is affected by the municipal development plan. Table of contents, number one is planning our future, number two, supporting our people, three, serving our community, four, protecting our natural heritage, number five is caring for our land, number six, respecting our neighbors. A copy of the full text and accompanying maps are on file in the City Clerk's office for public examination or can be viewed at the city website at virgens.org, and this was filed June 24th, 2009. First off, before we get started, I need to set some housekeeping rules. Basically, it starts at the council level. We are here as members to hear testimony tonight and only hear testimony, we will not debate. If you want to speak as a citizen, I would ask that you leave the table, go out into the audience and make your points made, and then return to the tables. You have every right to speak, but I will need to make sure that we have a quorum here at the table at all times while we're having the hearing, okay? We have got a sign-up sheet, if there is anybody that has not signed up and would like to, I need to get that done so that we can hear.
This is about testimony on the-
This is about testimony. If you're here just to listen, that's fine, but if you're going to testify, then you should take and be on here, because I will call by name. I will attempt to call by name, I may have to have Mel help to read some of them. Okay. All right, we're going to start right off and open up the hearing. First one, Jennifer Austin.
As you don't know, my name is Jennifer Austin, and I am an owner of a company that owns two retail businesses and a commercial building which houses Black Sheep Bistro located in the Central Business District. We have some concerns regarding the language in the proposed plan, specifically, we object to the implementation of design review and the requirement for structures to be multiple story. These proposals will create an additional financial burden for us that is untenable given the economic realities of being in business in a small community in a state that is already one of the most expensive, expensive to be in business in. The building which houses the bistro is a one-story building. This language would seem to anticipate regulations which would require the structure to be rebuilt as a two-story building in the event of catastrophic damage to the existing structure. Given the proposed plan, we would choose one of two options, first being not to rebuild, thereby creating a make-up lot in the middle of our downtown, or the second one being, in a proactive sense, we would effectively reverse amortize our out-of-pocket expense associated with a potential rebuild by passing these costs to our tenants through significantly increased rents, which would most likely put them in a untenable situation and leave us with an empty building. As entrepreneurs, we assume significant risks and we deal with economic reality. These proposals are obviously well-intentioned, but will ultimately have an adverse impact on existing as well as any potential new businesses. We also live in the Historic Neighborhood District, our specific concerns here regard page 75, bullets 1, 3, and 4. This language would seem to anticipate regulations which would encompass design review to which we are opposed. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer, by chance, do you have a spare copy of that, or we can give that to our-
I have one for you.
Please, thank you. All right, but if we can get a copy of that, it would be appreciated.
It looks like Avery, Andrew McCabe.
Andrew McCabe?
This is my address, it's 2-1. I live in Maine, I actually live in, uh, Waper Street in Middlebury. Uh, I'm one of the owners of, uh, The Stone Walk with Tom Jackman and a partnership called Old Men in Baggy Pants. I actually don't have a problem with design review. My understanding of how that's written is that I've got to ensure our building so that I can reproduce it as it was originally built. Now, I may well be misinformed, but that's what I've been told. Uh, I tried reading it, but it's kind of legal language and it's not a strength of mine to read documents like that. But if indeed what we're saying is that I've got to ensure that building so that I can rebuild it as it is, we're talking, I looked, talked to my insurance company, they eyeballed it, that I actually have to pay somebody quite a bit of money to come in and reappraise it for this job. Uh, I think the bid was like thirty-four hundred bucks to do that. But our insurance right now would triple. We're insured for a million six, and if anybody wants to buy that building for a million six, speaking on behalf of the partnership, it's all yours. Uh, but we would have to insure that to somewhere around $4.5 million to rebuild that building as it is. That would mean that we'd raise the rents of everybody across that board, and I can tell you that since we bought it, we just haven't done that. Dave Laro pays $25 more today than the day we bought it 11 years ago. Uh, I pay the same as I did, Tom pays the same as I did. We've never raised the antique shop's, uh, rents. Uh, the upstairs are all below Section 8 levels just because we like to find good people and reward them for being good tenants. But if you, if, if we have that extra $12,000 to $13,000 insurance bill, that's going to have to be spread across. Now, maybe that's not what you're saying, maybe what we're saying is design review. I believe the community has, uh, I think every building owner has a responsibility to, you know, work with the community, you bet. And if you're saying that if our building was to burn and we come to you and say, uh, we'd like to do this, and you say, no, we'd like you to consider this, all that's good, you know, I'm good, I'm willing to listen to reasonable people on a review board. What I'm, what I'm afraid of is somebody saying, you have to rebuild this building as it was when it was built. Does that mean we replace the asbestos? Does that mean we replace our value windows that are historically accurate that have no value whatsoever? At what point are we going to be reasonable here? So, once again, if all we're talking about is design review, I'm willing to trust that we'll have a, a board that's sensible and will help us, you know, work together. But if what we're saying is you have to rebuild this building exactly as it was, that's just plain silly.
Thank you. Next one that's registered is Matt Jerry.
All right, as the mayor just said, I'm Matt Jerry, I own a property down here on 30 Main Street. It is now in a residential limited business district, and there's been some changes there, I think, but maybe not, and I don't know what has changed since last month's Planning Commission meeting that I attended. But I've written a couple of letters that the Planning Commission has, and my high points are that professional services in, in the new writing, professional services are written as part of the paragraph describing the residential limited business district, but professional services is not listed as a use. So I have a problem with that, is that they're describing what they, the Planning Commission, and from their survey, what the majority of people think that that district should look like, and that professional services should be an authorized use, or that, that's what they would like to see it as, but then it's not included as an authorized use. Um, it's also my view that if the use is allowed in a resident, in a residence, as an in-home occupation, I think that it also should be allowed in our residential limited business district. And that, the way that it's written now, and I might be wrong on this, it may have changed some since, but for an example, business office is now allowed in, in this district, residential limited business, but there's many businesses that I think are similar, maybe not quite as white-collar as business office, maybe a little bit more blue-collar, but they aren't allowed, and I don't think that that is a fair way to do business. And the survey that the Planning Commission, um, and I'll give them much credit, I appreciate all the work that they've done, they got, I, this off the top of my head, I think it was around 120 responses, it might have been 150, but I'll say 120. I think 80 of those responses, which would be two-thirds, but I know it was a majority, so I'll just go on record as saying it was a majority of the people who responded to that also checked off professional services as being a, an okay, um, business to do in that district. Also tied into that, at the moment, the way that the plan is written in, in the plan that exists right now, um, not the rewrite, professional studio is a conditional use, and it's my understanding from last month, I didn't really get an answer, but I didn't get, anybody tell me that I wasn't correct, that the professional studio isn't written in there, it, it's gone. And I would, and my reasoning for this is, the same as this gentleman's, is I would like to take that house as a house now and maybe change its use to more of a business use. Haven't had much interest from anybody in using it as a house for the last three years, so I'm thinking, what else can I do to try to stay afloat, and if we change it to a business use, which I think these are all good uses, and the people that filled out that survey all think the same thing, the majority of the people think the same thing, that those will be some good business uses for that district. Thank you.
Joan, do you have enough to matter, or do you need any of this note, anything? Allison?
I'm sorry, I thought the meeting started at 7:00, so I missed whatever comments the City Council's making, so I don't know what changes you discussed, so it's coming out of.
Allison, this, this is not a point for discussion, it's a point to hear everyone tell us what they want, and then what will happen, we will schedule a meeting with the Planning Commission and then go over what the testimony is here, add it with the other testimony that was offered, and then we will figure out if there is or what the changes will be.
I just did note, if you were reading on point, that it was suggested that we write a response to the meeting.
Nope.
But in general, I want to say that overall, I support the rewrite of the plan, and I believe the intention of the Historic Neighborhood District and the Downtown District is not to set up a strict design review, as in, you know, all your shutters must be black and all your houses must be white, but it's talking about scope and scale and mass, and I understand, of course, that might have costs for people. We, we like our house where we live, and we insured it so it could be replaced, not exactly as it is, with the slow-beat foot lowers and the rotten windows, but size and scale, I wouldn't want to insure it so that if it got burned down, all I could do is build a, a one-bedroom rent, I mean, that's not what I want to live in. So I think that's the idea, is that overall, we hope our downtown holds a certain look and scale and size, and our neighborhoods hold that too, and I understand, of course, that means different things for the people, but overall, I thought the plan was well-written, and I look forward to hearing what the City Council suggests changes are due.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify, uh, in front of this council? If so, I'd ask you just, we'll just add your name to it, Jackson, just go ahead. Jackson Evans?
Jackson Evans, like the mayor said, I, the concern that I've mentioned before and that I would add to the record today is that the Northern Gateway District, um, the, the risk of that area turning into, uh, a developed retail area that competes with our compact downtown is, I think, present, even though it's the, maybe in the plan and in the discussion and some of the meetings, the intent was to create something that is, uh, sort of a complement to our downtown. I, I don't know if there's anything to say, at this point, if a developer were to come in and, and develop that area, what would their, what would the restrictions be on what they could put in there? I mean, could they put a competing, you know, competing businesses? Um, I think the intent is to have it be something that is, is connected to the downtown and sort of a part of the downtown, but I think the physical distance and just the, you know, the look and feel of what that area could be developed would be greatly different. So I think, it seems like it's going to become a zoning issue if at some point somebody does try to develop something there, and how do we, I just would want to note that there, there may be concern for that area developing into a competing downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Matt?
Hello, uh, Matt Barrow, uh, owner of Three Squares Cafe. Just sort of wanted to make a statement tying into what, uh, Mr. McCabe had said as a result of keeping this, this plan reasonable to the owners of the buildings, because he was saying if the situation arose where they had to insure for a much greater value, that could potentially as a tenant in one of his storefronts have an adverse effect on our bottom line. Rent's going up, you know, summertime, things are good, wintertime, things get tighter. That difference in rent for me wouldn't really make a difference in whether or not I stay in business, but I could see it resulting in whether or not somebody keeps a year-round position that I have. You know, I'm trying to just kind of paint the pictures, you know, the bottom line for everyone, it could result in me potentially having to lay off an employee or two, depending on the jump of the rent increase, especially with how tight things have been, you know, the last year and a half of the economy how it is. Uh, and that was pretty much it. I mean, I understand the good, good intentions with all of this, but just to, I want to throw my two cents in on the matter. I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Just put your last name, Matt, so we get it right. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I-
One of the things I wanted to do was, um, just for the record, acknowledge the memo that came in from the Planning Commission. Uh, Planning Commission held a meeting on July 15th, uh, to, uh, they've actually had two meetings since their public hearing on June 8th, uh, and on July 15th, put together a memo to the City Council relative to their recommendations. When the City Council, when the, when the Planning Commission held their public hearing on June 8th, at the close of that public hearing, uh, decided to move the document as, as proposed to the City Council. However, it was with, with clear understanding from that, uh, from the Commission that they would take into account the input that they heard on June 8th, and would prepare a memorandum to the City Council relative to their reaction to testimony that was heard on that June 8th hearing. Uh, so, uh, the City Council was forwarded, uh, this with their agenda packets, it's obviously available to anybody that wants a copy. For instance, Matt, just to, uh, just to pick you out, uh, just to read one, one sentence in there, because you had made reference about what, you weren't sure if anything had been changed, and the answer is, nothing has been changed. Uh, the City Council tonight is having a public hearing on the exact document that the Planning Commission held their public hearing. However, that said, uh, under the residential limited business district where your property at 30 Main Street is locating, located as an example, Planning Commission recommends adding the following uses to the residential slash limited business district, third bullet, page 79, nursing home, professional studio, and office. Planning Commission acknowledges these uses were overlooked during our review of this district. That's the good news. The second news, the Planning Commission recommends not adding retail instructional facility or community center as uses to the residential slash limited business district. Through a public hearing on this district in the summer of 2007, the Planning Commission heard mixed input from residents from this neighborhood, while folks, uh, while some folks requested some intensive commercial uses, others appreciated the residential nature of the area and requested supporting the existing residential uses. Because neighbors have not come out strongly for one side or the other, the Planning Commission recommends incremental changes as the most appropriate policy. So I, I just pulled that one out, just to let folks know here, that those that testified in front of the Planning Commission on June 8th, that was not hit with their fears, they took into account everybody that testified at that hearing. It's incorporated in this memorandum of July 15th, which, which as I mentioned, is totally available to anybody here to, to take a look at, uh, the, the Planning Commission's reaction to the testimony that they heard on June 8th.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mel. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Planning Commission and the citizens that put in such an effort and a lot of long hours to get this plan where it is today. We will be setting a meeting between the Planning Commission and the council to go over the information that we've received here and at the previous hearing, and their recommendations, and, uh, then we'll go forward from there. If, are there any other comments that anyone wants to make at this point? Diane?
Another hearing, Mayor?
Yes, be at least one more hearing.
Least one, and that'll probably be late September, early October, depending on what happens to the document, so. If not, I'll close the public hearing and thank everyone for coming. I'll give just a few minutes for those individuals that are leaving the meeting to depart, and then we'll start the City Council meeting. How's that? Fast enough? Give mine just a split second. I'll call the Virgen City Council meeting July 21st together. Please all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for coming tonight, and welcome, again. We're going to move right into the segment of, uh, public comment. Is there anyone, uh, in the audience that would like to offer anything this evening? And Diane, this would probably be the opportunity for you to speak up.
Diane actually submitted a report by email, and I just wanted to pass that out I think what you have before you is what you've typically seen of my committee reports of my time on City Council. I still have roles that require me to report back here, and so I'm glad to be here. From the Virgens Energy Committee, I'd like to give you an update on what's happening there, and I'm also going to speak about, uh, the recent act our board and the results of that meeting as well. The Virgens Energy Committee, although we've been meeting, we haven't been, you know, all that active, but there are people that continue to want to, uh, work and support the community in that effort. Steve Lowell has been continuing with the low-carbon diet, and there are load testers still at the Bixby. Um, I'm still involved with and a member of the ERC team, the Economic Community Response Team, um, and preparing for a community resource, uh, event at Virgens Day. Going into the future, um, I have been observing and hearing some reports of the really, really good work that came out of the Ripton Energy Committee. Warren King has, has, um, with his committee, been able to, through volunteers, been able to go around his community, and right now, they have successfully done a, an energy audit, maybe not the full-scale energy audit, but have gone to homes and residents within Ripton and performed audits on 15% of the community now. And that is a really commendable effort. Um, I'm looking at what that would take to do in Virgens, um, and so more on that later. You may be aware of, um, the recent passing of H446, as I, is it called, it's the energy bill that passed this recent legislative session. There's imp, um, things that can happen within Virgens that I'm looking at as the rules of that come about. Two things in particular that I find of interest, that I think is value for me to keep an eye on and report back to you on as they develop. The first and foremost is, um, the establishment of, or the, or some of the communities that will be establishing areas called the Clean Energy Assessment Districts. The rules to this right now are in public, uh, service board, they're looking at the rates, and basically what that will do when that comes out, will allow a municipality to enter into a partnership with a utility to, with solar, hydro, wind, basically, we would become a utility on our own. It would be a money maker. It is a positive cash flow, or that's what its intent is, for the community. Um, how that will all develop will probably be in the works for about three years. What I do know is that there are very few communities that will be accepted into this. And, um, with your permission, I will, and report back to you on what some of those guidelines are, and keep my ear and eye on what's happening there to see if, and I can communicate with you, Mel, directly and Mayor, and then, as to see if that's something that Virgens may qualify for, may be interested in doing. I'm very encouraged by the fact of, of having, bringing something that would be a positive cash flow, or its intent. The other piece that is, is not totally developed is what, um, would be of that same bill, allowing, uh, municipality or citizens from within to actually borrow basically from their property tax for energy improvements. I do not have all the details on that just yet, but that's something that I'm, I want to keep track of as well. And that's about what the Energy Committee's been up to. Now into, there's a lot more about the next issue on actors. Since I've last seen you, um, we, I think I was before you, before, in the budget process, um, and since then, the board has met, and so I'd like to kind of give you an overview of where that's all gone. All right, um, let me see where to start. I've made some notes to help keep myself on track, and so I don't want to forget something either, so I may read it from time to time, so, uh, excuse that. But, uh, I wanted to come back and report to you, as you remember, I see myself, you know, this body has appointed me to be the member to the Virgens spokesperson on that board, and, um, on July 10th, there was the annual, the, the annual meeting that was followed by the board meeting, and, uh, there were a lot of things that were discussed at that two, three-hour meeting, but I, I'm going to stick tonight to what was relevant or what I think is relevant to Virgens, and the important picture that's, it was there. I want to give you an overview- I want to give you an overview of the funding picture. And I want to apologize for maybe not getting back to you sooner on that piece, as it was developing over, over the session. But as, as you are aware, is this painstaking, dramatic flux of the state budget, and in my case, being on transportation, particularly the state transportation budget. And there was a great deal of uncertainty on where that budget, or what that budget was going to look like at the, at the end of the session, when I last reported my, I think it was in mid-February was the last time that I reported on where we were with ACTAR, and the idea of, of their going forward with the expansion grant again. And, and since then, and, but before our last conversation during the budget process, there has been a lot that has occurred. And some of the things that have occurred that you may or may not be aware of, that really impact the direction, and I might say all in a positive way, is, is this, and I'll keep that part short. The American Recovery and Investment Act, the stimulus funds. Now, they came to Vermont over this last session, and the state received for, for in the area of transportation, a total of $130 million. And of that 130, 5.6 million was targeted for public transit. Now, in the flux of the year, we weren't sure how that was going to come in and what was happening with this, but sure enough, by March, this was clearer and clearer. The next step was those funds, that 5.6 million dollars, we chose to spend on 44 buses statewide in Vermont. Four buses are allocated for ACTAR. They are the second-largest recipient of stimulus funds of any of the other regional transportation providers. Now, the next piece is that, well, stimulus money now is going to get coupled up with an unprecedented amount of state funding that came into the mix. At the next level, the transportation bill, not knowing where we were going to be able to fund or not fund what would be called new start grants, and which is the, which would be the grant process that any and all public transit authorities apply for, for any new starts. This is the second leg of that table. In the past, Vermont's state budget has only been allocating about $350,000 for that grant process. This past year is now 1.5 million is available for new start grants. ACTAR last year in '08 was fourth on a list of, of the top three received funding. ACTAR was fourth, and there were a few reasons for that, and some of it was, you know, a little bit strengthening of support in where they were. So I believe that they, that we now with a couple of stimulus money that has come down, state budget money that has been very, very well-funded, and the regional partnership with ACTAR and the skills of writing grants, that we stand very poised to be able to obtain a very nice grant. So what I see from my seat was stimulus money coming in, state money, and now this is being brought to the doorstep of my own community. And I see, and I have to tell you that I'm very, very pleased and I'm very happy that personally, that I have been a common denominator at each one of those jumps. And it brings me great pleasure to bring that straight down to this doorstep. And I realize that, you know, you needed to make a choice, and your budgets are tight, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer and someone who's going through flux of income. Thank you. I do appreciate it. But I wanted to make sure that you understood what was at stake and where it was coming from on that. This opportunity is, is there, and we did not know this back in February, when we did not know what was going to be possibly out there, but it was hopeful. And so today, the picture is a lot brighter and clearer on where that's going to be. I brought information, as you probably know I would. Let me, let me pass these out. Joan, if I can ask you to pass that out in here. I'm going to ask you to, please, take a look at this and carefully read it, and you don't need to do that now. It's, it's a lot to digest. But what is in there is, is our, the top is a cover sheet, is a community fact sheet, other information on Virgin's. There's also additional information on there to help with where we were making a statement on the downtown designation and the relationship to public transit, the ridership and the sample letter. I'm just going to make out a few, bring up a few points, and from this is that the grant itself was a proposal to expand, which include direct service between Middlebury and Virgin's. And this would increase the frequency from every two hours to every hour. There is no direct service currently between Virgin's and Middlebury, and this current frequency, or infrequency of the, of the route is, is difficult for riders. And I believe that the service is not adequate, which I believe that this council has pointed out in the past. ACTAR plays a vital role to the economy of Addison County. It provides employers with employees and businesses with customers. And we don't say that just because we want to, or as a board member, or as your entity. There is sufficient data to support that as well. And riding, riding ACTAR is a more affordable option than actually owning a car. And I want to say that in this economic time, families who are losing their jobs, or individuals, members of families that are losing their jobs, it has been brought to my attention recently, in the last couple of days, that that can also mean the loss of a vehicle. That when someone loses their job, their vehicle may be very well tied to, to that, to that, to that job. And I believe that we will play a more and more vital role as people seek employment and being able to move around and help families lessen their expenses. There was a study that was conducted in 2006 that found that we've only captured, that ACTAR's only captured 50% of what is the potential ridership out there. Now, this, this grant that will be applied for is a competitive grant, and I believe that you know that. But one of the most important criteria of that piece of competition is having community support. And, and with, with, with your support and with funding, match funding for the service. VTrans, or the Vermont, the Agency of Vermont Transportation, will cover 80% of the grant that's going to be applied for, and it leaves 20% from local match. And of that 20%, one-third of it is coming from Middlebury, one-third is coming from Bristol, and we had asked for one-third to come from Virgin's. There's, on the next page where I am, is looking at ACTAR funding request. There's a lot of data on there, and I'm going to leave that to you to digest, and we are welcome to come back and invite Jim at any time that you would like and have more time to hear a further explanation on this. But it is a very, it is a cost, there's a cost to Virgin's. It is minimal, but, but there is a cost. It is calculated that the $3,750 for the expansion would cost $1.37 per resident, or $3.63 per household. We can counter that with actually making the statement and having looked at the numbers, that after two times on the bus, you are now starting to save money. I'm going to leave the rest of that to you. On the back, I know that the council had expressed concerns, both directly and indirectly, and although you didn't ask for a response to them, I thought I would make it available. It may be helpful. And, and that is why I bring that to you, or at least attempt to answer those questions there. I believe that someone or somewhere that had made mention that the property tax is not the right source, and that very well may be. It is very unfortunate that that is the only source that you have control over within, within the budget. We don't have the ability, or the city doesn't have the ability, to affect gas tax, sales tax, or income tax. And as far as what burden does the city have for this project, if it doesn't become, if it's not funded in the next three years after this startup grant expires, you have no commitment. You have no commitment year to year on this. I do want to point out, and I, that there is, that has shown, that there's no startup service that has been unfunded going forward. So there's a very, very good track record that after three years, it would continue. And there's some other information in there on a spring survey, if you're looking for data. Middlebury College had performed a survey of Virgin's residents, where 77% of the Virgin's residents supported spending at least $10 more a year, which I got to say, I was a little surprised. Bristol was 56%. The whole public transit is also a very important part, I had mentioned before, about being a part of and a determination of the downtown destination. There's a few other comments, there's some answers to questions that were common concerns, not ones that we heard from this council, but ones that, that have come up in other conversations that may be helpful to you. There is a sheet with ACTAR service that is specific data to Virgin's. I'm not going to go through that, take a look at that. I think it really points out what a wonderful, you know, well, what a wonderful job they do with keeping data, that's for sure. When you, when you're in the process of grants, and I'm sure, Mel, you've been a part of this, keeping data is extremely important to verifying what's happening with that. And from that, we have a lot of data specifically to Virgin's at that. And in 2008, I just want to point that there was 10,981 rides of, of Virgin's residents and employers with an increase of 7.6%. In this process of, of looking for support or seeing what's out there, the, the board has received letters from people in Virgin's very specifically, and I'm pretty sure that the Boys and Girls Club has shared their, their support letter with you, and I'm not sure if you, you've seen it or not, but I've included it in the packet. It's very, very well done. Michael Reedier does a very good job of laying out, not just that he supports it, why he supports it, and gives specific examples. And some of those are that he has, continues has a challenge going forward with transportation for the boys and girls that are there to get to employment. The time of travel has, has been too long, they can't, they can't access things in Middlebury after school. The little, the letter is very compelling and detailed. He's lost many volunteers of, of Middlebury College students because of their inability to get to Virgin's, and he's only one of the sources. There's another source of support here that, when I found, didn't find this in time to include it in that particular packet, but I think, I think you'll recognize this one. This is from city council in 2008. This is a resolution to support this particular grant. And being on the board, this was in April of '08, that this was signed and passed, and it was very, very specifically states that you not only support it, but passed a resolution to support it. So I am not sure if we need another one at this point for the 2009 application, or if this one would suffice as a continuing resolution, and maybe somebody can help me with that. But I'm going to assume at this point, a resolution is for, from the time that it started, which was Act, April 8th. You support the proposal for a one-hour direct service. You support the application of this grant, and I am grateful, and I'm speaking as a board member, that, that, for your support. If you would like to add to this for this year's, the competitive grant will be submitted August 7th. And I'm going to leave that to you. I don't know if we need to have, once it's, if it's valid, it's valid. We're going to go ahead and use that.
Because we, we may not be having a council meeting prior to that date.
Yeah, it's not specific to an application. It's, it's, to me, it, it doesn't have a term to it. It's a valid, it's a valid resolution unless it was, unless this board overturned it.
As I said too, it's, you know, hardly endorses and supports ACTAR's proposal to expand the tri, the tri-town shuttle bus route. It did not say what year.
That's correct.
So we're still in the, so we are going to use this going, going into, as a support. I'm also going to pass out, I'm not sure if I've got enough copies of this, but this is the newsletter that was out in, that came out in July.
Can I just add a comment?
Sure.
You supported ACTAR, it was in our budget, we made a contribution to it, you know, so, I mean, I appreciate the reinforcements, but we did what we could afford. And I just need to say that out loud.
Oh, I, I agree. And I appreciate it, and on behalf of the board, we appreciate, that would be the continuing service of the 4,000. Yes, thank you. I'm here to say what happened next, the, what, what's ongoing after your decision. And so I just wanted to make sure I laid some of the groundwork that I did not have, or was not available in February when I first, it was just a, an idea. And now that the session is over, we have real, real financial support and opportunity there. So I apologize for not having gotten it here earlier, and it wasn't maybe available totally. But I'm going to move forward and talk about what the board decided on July 10th. The Board of Directors met, and they have seen value in the service, this, this expansion grant, and what it could poss, and what it will bring to Virgin's, and they voted to include Virgin's in the application. So they are not off of the application. It is too important to this area, the, given the express support by the community, express support by the employers, employees, it was clear that this service has demonstrated a need, and I appreciated their vision and foresight at the board to support Virgin's with this fiscal assistance in the 2010 budget. So I believe that that is very good news, and I think you can thank the board for, for that, that piece. This, like I said, the application is due on August 7th, and, and a decision will be made shortly after that. And being a competitive grant, we don't know. We could make it nothing, and it will be, it will be of no, there'll be no match needed. Or it could possibly be of a lesser route, or they could, but the number has not been decided. With, when the decision is made, I will come back to you and report to you that result. And I have, I personally have informed the ACTAR board that on the 10th, that they can expect my full commitment to going out, to seeking an assistance to reimbursing them for their support of Virgin's in this manner, which is why I feel that I needed to explain in detail. I, I will be asking, and I'm asking you tonight, if you would like to at some point reconsider or consider at some point in your budget process, because I know how tough it is. You had only a certain amount of discretionary funds that you felt you did not want to jeopardize at this point with, with this. But possibly, and I'm asking that it possibly down the line, if it becomes available, or there's an opportunity where you see that you can help to reimburse the board's support of Virgin's, that would be greatly appreciated. In the meantime, I myself, I am going to be going to local organizations, community people, employers, and I am going to be asking for their help directly as well. And that will be over the next couple of months. I am also, as a Virgin's Energy Chair, supporting this application and this grant, and have asked and will be seeking and hopefully get the support of the Virgin's partnership. Would be, and I'm very thrilled that they are up and running, and we have someone as skilled as Jackson now on staff. So I'll be looking for their support as well. I want to thank you for your time and the ability to give you so much detail. Thanks.
Any questions of Diane? Appreciate, or stays?
Any questions of Diane, appreciate, stays?
I think I need to leave now. By some point.
No questions? Diane, thank you very much for delivering that message the way you did. It's been very informative. As any process, we constantly look at stuff, but it's more on an annual basis. I'm not sure if we'll have any windfalls between here and there that might change that, but in hopes that, I heard a gentleman this weekend who's connected with a financial group, and he says recession's going to come to an end, the end of this year. So, or at least heading that direction in a big way. So hopefully things can change, and if it does, we will have another look at it.
I appreciate that, and I wanted to make sure that you understood what my actions will be.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
And good luck with the businesses and the residents that you approach. Any other one, anybody else that would like to offer anything for public comment? If, if not?
Open the first section.
No, no, you can stay, if you want to stay and enjoy our-
They're actually agenda item, I'm sorry, where is it? Oh, it's not on the agenda. It's a new one, new peddler's-
This is a new peddler's license waiting on? Yeah, that's farther down in the agenda, so hang tight, if you would please. Okay, what I will do so that we can move that to the top of the business and move that, let's grab those two peddler's licenses and deal with those right now, and make sure I grabbed the right thing.
You want to deal with the, this one? Ray's is the one where the board approved a Friday, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Joan, if you can give the details on this status of this?
Yeah, I have both of them there. The original one is on the back with the picture. That's the permit that you've authorized him. Because Jeff Seafood has not been using that location, because he was to share that location with Jeff Seafood. Ray has come back and asked to amend his permit to include the Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays which Jeff Seafood used to have, or still does have. I told him I need to have a letter in writing from Ray saying he is not interested in those-
From Jeff.
From Jeff, sorry.
Nope.
That he's no longer interested in those days at that location, and, but that I would present it to the council, and it would have to be contingent on written authorization from Jeff releasing those days, which are all of his three days. I guess Jeff's not going to do that.
I think Chris has got it all worded in her head.
I will make the motion that we amend Ray's license to reflect the additional Thursday, Friday, Saturday with a contingent that we received in writing that Jeff is going to hand those days back to us.
Second. Motion in a second. Open it up for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Is that supposed to be Jane or Lane?
I think it's Jane.
Jane? Jane Heath?
Heath.
Jane Heath, okay. All right, we have a snow-to-go, Hawaiian-shaved ice. That's the business. Everybody's got a copy of this? And, Joni, you got the insurance?
I do have a certificate of insurance. I do have the fee for the seasonal operation.
Okay. I'm trying to, and I'm having a bad night tonight. Where is this going to be done? Go screen, okay. There again, I'll ask for a motion, and a second, we'll open it for discussion.
I sent motion.
Randy made a motion. Ziggy, second it. Open it for discussion.
How big is your cart?
Actually, we were just representing Jane Heath.
Okay.
It's-
The Heaths aren't coming up for about another two weeks, so.
This would be for the month of August, and the cart, well, it's probably about this-
Roughly the size of the table?
Yeah, about the size of the table, and then there are supplies in addition.
Now, is that something that's going to be actually in the park on the sidewalk, or is that intended to be in a parking space next to the cart?
I think they would intend to have it on the green, or-
Well, I'm not sure. I would imagine that they would, they wouldn't want to obstruct pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk, so it would almost seem more sensible to have it in a parking space adjacent to the sidewalk. Now, I'm not sure what the green looks like, is there, would there be an appropriate place? The green is all grass, isn't it, with trees and so on? So it would seem to me not to be appropriate to have it on the green itself.
Randy?
I have a problem with that, because we already, parking spaces are invaluable to this community. I would, if it's a car, you know, about six feet long, I would rather see it on that corner near where the doghouse is at, up on, between, there's a little strip of grass in between the, where the two sidewalks converge.
Where the other hot dog.
Yeah, where the other hot dog cart was. Because I won't support it if it's on a parking space.
Okay, good, because I'm just not familiar with the configuration of the green and so on, so.
All right, you can kind of let me do the stains or what for the, on the market, and look at those area too, if it's not the market there, right?
That sounds fine to me.
I take it, one question that I have, I take it the cart will be moved on a daily basis and returned the following day?
Yes.
Whatever days of service that we authorize?
That's right, they're going to be towing it.
Any other discussion, questions?
I do have a question, if he's towing it, just how big is this cart?
If you've been downtown Burlington, that's how they move some of the ones, they wheel them in, and then they hook them behind their vehicle. They're very small, like, they're, like I say, it's probably not as long as the table, maybe it's a little bit shorter.
Right.
And maybe a few inches wider, but basically if you use a table size, that is, you see them around, will it take electricity? Will it require electricity?
Um, yes, it does. I'm pretty sure it does.
It would have to be plugged in somewhere, and so it would have to be, somewhere near an outlet, it would have to use city power.
Yeah, one of the things, obviously, this thing came here on Monday, it's not a part of your packet, you know, it's not a part of your packet. One of the things that's on Randy and my plate here that we are having a hard time finding time to deal with is to improve the whole app process in the ordinance as it relates to peddlers, all right? You know, one of the things that the board did relative to the hot dog cart, and somebody tried to describe what this thing looked like, and really nobody knew what it looked like, and we needed to be provided a picture of this thing with dimensions and a very specific location as to where it goes, all right? So to me, I, don't take offense to this, to me, your application isn't complete, and I don't think the City Council should be acting on something when they really don't have all of the information that they need to act. So to me, the application's incomplete. We need pictures, we need a specific location being proposed. Relative to electricity, we have had instances of other peddlers that need electricity, and the city needs to be compensated for that electricity. The peddler's license, $100 fee is a license fee. It doesn't include overhead that the Virgin's taxpayers are going to absorb, so my feeling is, is that you don't have enough information to act on this application.
Go ahead and then, Chris.
I was going to make a motion to table it.
Wait, one, did you have a comment, sir?
Yes, I was, I was just wondering whether, I mean, we could get a picture, and we could get the details. Is there someone on the council who perhaps could be delegated to look it over once the application is complete then?
It'll work that way.
It has to be approved by the whole council.
Okay.
And we only meet every couple of weeks. It's usually the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, depending if we have some other special situations that we have to address that we would-
If it takes a while to see, I don't know what your draw is, I don't know what amp circuit you need, I don't have enough information, that's-
Well, we don't either, but we can find out. We call Jane Heath and get the information.
Okay, I already have a motion in a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? I already have, Chris, I have a motion in a second already on the table. I would either ask that those get withdrawn, and you will, you will, no, who made this motion, a second, you?
Randy.
Who made the motion?
I made a motion to withdraw.
No, you don't have to, just withdraw your motion.
I have a strong motion.
I will make a motion that we table it until further information is provided.
Now I have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to table this until we get the information that we need, that would be size, location where it's going to be physically located on the green.
Picture.
Picture. Power requirements, if it answers, we're missing people. I guess that does it. So hearing that motion, all those, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion in hand?
Aye.
Those opposed? So carried, so this is tabled until we get that needed information.
Right.
Okay?
We haven't said it yet.
We haven't said it yet.
I think it's, I think it's August 11th. Yeah, I think it's maybe the 12th, 10, 11, 11.
I think it's August 11th.
Okay.
Yep, that is a, I believe it Tuesday.
That's right.
Yep, so I believe it's August 11th.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, raise, 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 raise. Yeah, no. All right, the wards went around, and they were signed. Does anybody have any questions? Whoops, let's do the minutes. I'd ask for a motion on the minutes for the following meetings. Virgin City Council Budget Workshop, June 30th, 2009. Virgin City Council Meeting, June 30th. What kind of motion?
A second. And I'd like to make a question.
And now we'll open it up for corrections, omissions, or errors. Joan?
Okay, Budget Work Session, the first paragraph I have, the sentence says, "We will need to use $3,000." It's $23,000.
I found my submission. I found my June 2 budget submission, Chris.
So that number should be changed from three to 23,000.
Okay. Any other corrections on either of the documents? All right, that correction will be made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Now we'll go to budget reports.
Yeah, just quickly, there's a couple of budget reports, if you will, in your packets. One of them is a budget report, I think it's dated July 17th, I think.
Yes.
Because what we did, instead of in past years where we've closed out the year, and then you pay bills in July, and then do a bunch of journal entries to, you know, for electric bills for usage in June that end up being paid in July, what we opted to do this year, after communicating with our software people at New England Municipal Resource Center, was to keep the period open, keep June open until we could reconcile the checking account and pay bills that reflected purchases made or acquisitions of product that was, that were made, or electricity or telephone usage in June. In past years, you know, as I mentioned to you, these things have been handled by journal entries, and journal entries actually can be problematic to try to track things, so we left, we left the, that period open through about Ju- July 15th. And so what this budget report reflects is in essence the 12th month of electric usage, the 12th month of telephone charges and any other purchases that were made during the month of June that we did not receive a bill by June 30th. So it really, this budget report is, should end up being very, very close to when the auditors actually come here and do an audit of our accounts. Receivables, on the other hand, that closes on June 30th. If that doesn't make, it's only about what makes it to the bank on June 30th. So it doesn't include July 1 mail, it includes money that Joan brought to the bank at 4:30 on June 30th. So we, we will not know exactly what our fund balance is until we get to the 60th day. We've talked about that, that delinquent taxes, we ended the year at $55,000 in delinquent taxes. We've already collected around $15,000. The goal for delinquent taxes is obviously zero, that would be the zero, to have no delinquent taxes. However, you know, realistically, our goal is to make sure that we do a fair amount better than we've done in the past. Last year, 60 days in, we still had $37,000 of delinquent taxes, interest, and penalty. You know, our goal is certainly to break that number and as low as we can possibly get it. Using a projection of $30,000 not collected 60 days into the year, we project a fund balance of about $75,000. So we have made, when you look at the other budget report, if you will, that I gave you, which was really the final budget that the City Council adopted, we made all of the changes to salary and salary-related items. We made the change for the appropriation to the Virgin's partnership, and we made the change in the Public Works budget for the debt service on the new truck. And also, we were able to finalize the grand list. There was only one, there was only one Board of Civil Authority appeal, that decision has been made. And so that $23,000, using $23,000 of the fund balance, actually only grew to $25,000, and that's because the grand list actually held solid through grievance and Board of Civil Authority. So of that $75,000 projected fund balance, we're using $25,000 to keep the tax rate the same, and if this budget stays on track through the year, both revenues, expenses, there should be $50,000 waiting at the, at the end of the year, which hopefully could be used to continue to keep the tax rates stable.
Any other questions or discussion on the budget?
And we didn't bother doing a budget report since we've only paid, we've only paid 15. There are some bills, obviously, for the month of July, but we didn't bother putting that together to you. You know, here we are, only 15 days into the new fiscal year, but we'll get, we'll get a budget report to you in August reflecting a month's worth of activity.
No, can I just ask that portable generator, is that for the new project?
No. Portable generator, actually, we just purchased, it just arrived, I believe, either yesterday or today, it's for the wastewater treatment plant. Because of our spill prevention, I think spill prevention plan, when there's a power outage, in the olden days, when you had a power outage and the pump stations obviously ceased to work, they overflowed into the river. That's not acceptable any longer, and so when there's a power outage, as a part of our spill prevention plan, we have to have a, we have to have a generator, and the company that we purchased from, Brookfield Services, is actually a company that I was aware of from my previous job, and we were able to find a used generator. And used generators aren't used a lot, if you know the nature of a, nature of a generator. This generator here is probably a $35,000 unit that we got for $19,000, which will work absolutely fine for our, for our pump stations. Obviously, in a complete citywide power outage- Obviously, in a complete citywide power outage, this thing is on a trailer and it roams, it basically roams from, would roam from pump station to pump station, pump out the wet well, go to another pump station, pump out the wet well, go to another pump station. So, you know, we don't own, we don't, we have four pump stations. They all have some level of capacity in them. It's not like they run 24 hours a day. You know, there's a wet well and there's a float switch on all of them that comes on when the pump comes on. So we believe that this should, you know, take care of most every instance of a power outage. As you all know, we don't have a lot of long power outages in Virgin's, but, so this is really a part of that requirement under our, under our wastewater permit to have that facility.
Any other questions? This just requires signature?
Yeah.
Okay, we have some contracts agreements between different organizations that requires signature, just one page, people?
Yeah. What happened, we found these in the file and I think it was at the last meeting, we handed out social service agreements for those voter appropriations that were made in March. And I had you all sign them in duplicate and send them out to the various agencies and they sign in return. Well, it appears that in the past, the agreements have gone out and once they returned is when they went back to the city council. And I think that Rennie forgot to tell me. They actually came back and sat in a file and didn't make it back to the board, except for the Boys and Girls Club. I think the Boys and Girls Club contract came back when I was here.
So late, yeah, so late.
It came so late, I thought it was the only, I thought it was the last one. And then when in reality, all of the others had come back, so we just, it's really more of an administrative, because actually, these people are starting to provide their, how we found it is, is that these agencies do understand our process, where there's a contract and there's a reporting. So when the reports were coming in, we tried to connect the report to their contract and found out that the contract never got signed by the city council. So we're just trying to tidy up the file.
Okay. If not, that closes the budget portion. Now we go to committee reports. Well, like I said at the last meeting, but tonight would not have been a good night. We'd like to see about having the fishing derby committee here on the 11th. Okay. Have to do certificates of appreciation. And so, can you get the word out to the committee and ask them if they could be present? I will. Please. Probably nothing else to report on that. Zay, anything? I think I did, you weren't here, or were you, last meeting? I did make it to Petersburg.
Yeah, you called me, but I had the tax repeal.
Yep, okay.
How did that go?
It went well. There's, we're waiting on a letter from them, just mentioning dates that we would, could meet with them. That has not come forward yet. So we're just, it's in their ballpark and we're just, we'll respond when we get the letter. So I thought that would be here by now, but if I don't hear in a reasonable, a week or so, I'll call the weather back and maybe we'll just select some dates and throw them out there for them. Get that ball rolling. Okay? Randy, anything else?
Nothing to report. Other than the Virgin's.
Whoops.
Other than French Heritage Day, went off without a hitch. We got lucky with the weather and I was there all day.
I've heard from a number of residents regarding their tax bills, which is no surprise. The first thing they all say is they thank us for all our hard work and compliment Mel on the budget that he forwarded to us and they're very, very pleased with the city portion. And they are, at least the folks that I've heard from are equally displeased with regard to the education portion. I take a little bit of an opportunity, if they, they have some time, to explain from my perspective what some of the issues are with the education funding mechanism that's in place in the state. But these folks, there were three of them in particular, they asked us as the Board of Alderman to take a leadership role with regard to this issue. And it's no surprise that we really didn't see any activity whatsoever on this in the last legislative session. I've spoken on a number of occasions with our representatives from the district here and I think that by and large, we can all agree that we have some good, talented, hardworking folks up there. It's also clear from some of the conversations that I've had, not naming any names, but that there are some issues with regard to the majority leadership in both the House and the Senate in Montpelier. And it would appear at this point that those folks are somewhat out of touch with the financial realities of the average Vermonter. Be that as it may, I think that we do owe our constituents to do the best that we can do with this. And what I would propose is that we, and I would take it on as a project, to put together a forum for sometime in the early fall. Most of these things tend to take place further in the year. Nothing ever seems to occur. You know, I mean, we've been talking about this issue as long as I've been on this board and it's been discussed before that. And I'll say it again, I think that this district here is a well-run district. Unfortunately, under the current mechanism, this district, as well as any other district in the state, has no incentive to find any efficiencies because there's no reward for that. Additionally, this district, along with other districts which are well-run, end up subsidizing districts which are not. There shouldn't be a discussion about, about either for or against education. I go on record as saying that I think we have an excellent school system here and I would hate to see anything occur that would, would create an adverse situation for our students. That being said, something has to be done. And I'd like to take the opportunity with the, with the council's support to put together a forum. I would invite, invite folks from the surrounding communities. I think this would be the place to do it. Additionally, the school board and school officials as well, to give these folks an opportunity to voice their concerns and also have our legislators here. What I'd like to do is that we can come up with some, some concrete language to propose for these guys to take up the legislative council and come up with something that is going to provide some relief. Because an 8% increase this year coupled with an 8% increase next year or who knows what. These folks on our local school board, they say it's out of their hands and to a certain extent, that is true, based on this current funding. And, you know, from where I sit, I've about had it with people throwing their hands up and saying, "Well, there's nothing we can do about this." You know, we're going to have people losing their homes as a result of this if we don't do something about it. And again, it's not, it's not, it's not an anti-education thing. You know, I have a son who'll be in the middle school next year. I want there to be a good school as well as everybody else does. Something has to be done.
If no one on the council objects, I will ask David to step forward and take that responsibility on, set it up. We'll get the information out, we'll offer the city website to post information on it.
What I will do is I'll contact some of the key people that we would want to have involved and come up with an idea in terms of what works for scheduling. I'm not anticipating we'd have anything until well into the month of September to give everybody an opportunity to get vacations out of the way and get the school year started.
Okay. Anything else, David?
That's it.
You have to sign. Chris? I owe the lady at, for the farmer's market a call back. I gotta, she wants to put a sign out, Route 7. So I just gotta make, make some closure to that. So, okay. All business. Update on the appeal to the Gresham.
There's a conference call scheduled for September 1. And as I've mentioned before, I continue to speak to Jim Runsey. I just want the environmental judge to read the DRB decision and make it, and make a judgment as to whether or not this project either is or isn't in conformance with their zoning regulations. It's a real simple, it's a real simple decision in my, in my opinion. And I just received a copy of a 19-page motion of summary judgment filed by, by the appellant. That's the kind of activity that results in big lawyer bills, all right? This is real simple. They made an application. The DRB denied the application for reasons that they found appropriate. It's appealed to the environmental court. The judge should just rule. Read our zoning regs, read the decision and rule. One way or the other. Not have this thing drag on forever and ever with, with legal briefs being filed from both sides and ending up with huge legal bills. So I'm, I've made our attorney, made it very clear to the city's attorney, attorney relative to what our job is. You know, our job is just to simply defend that decision. It's not about rehearing the whole case. Let's just find out what the decision is. So I'm hoping that we, that we learn something soon here so that this, this matter just doesn't continue to drag. And this is, the two denials, there was a subsequent denial and they are not combining the two decisions. They are being handled separately. So even if the city, even if the decision of the DRB is supported by the court, this thing could continue to go, go into the, into the court system relative to the second decision. So I'm trying to get it expedited as best I can, Mike, but it's, it's a frustrating and costly process.
Item 5B, Virgin Grade School District Disposition of Real Estate Property?
I don't have anything new to report. I, you know, I think at the last meeting, there was, the minutes actually, Joe spoke well, relative to the steps that, the discussion points that were made there. I, I'm still waiting on budget information from my sister-in-law. She knows that that's on her things-to-do list so that we can figure out what, what the impact is for us, both in insurance costs. The other thing, Mike, that you, your idea of trying to find out if whether or not, if insurance for nonprofit was the issue, and it is an issue, in cost and availability, I did pursue with the League of Cities and Towns to find out if whether or not, like fire departments, there are nonprofit fire departments, nonprofit rescue squads that are insured under, in essence, the host municipality. And that is not available to us for, for a swimming pool. And the reason is, is because as hot as it is in this building here, a swimming pool is not a necessary governmental function, unlike fire and rescue. And so therefore, it's not that the league won't insure swimming pools because they certainly do. There's municipal pools. What they can't do is ensure a pool that's owned by a nonprofit organization. So that option, that option is not available to us. So we're, we'll be back to you at some point, you know, we're, I know that, I know that it's the goal of the Virgin's Graded School District and Superintendent O'Brien to, for the school system to be, not to, not be in the swimming pool business after June 30th of 2010. I know that's their goal. So we'll, we'll be back to you, you know, with, probably with an action item at some point here.
But if we do end up taking that over, we will be able to insure it.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Only if we own it.
Only if we own it. Thank you for that clarification, Mel. We'll go into item number six, city manager's report.
Sure. I just wanted, five items. One, I wanted to let everyone know, in essence, the status of Chief Lowell and really where we're at. I'm not in a position, obviously, to share any, any details. But obviously, Mike was charged with DUI drugs. There was a press release. He gets a rein on August 10th. I also have an affidavit relative to the Officer Worley, who was the Virgin's officer that was on the scene. Obviously, Mike was processed by the, by the state police. It is my intent at this point that this, you know, based on the fact that Mike was charged with DUI drugs and there is a report that resulted in, in the state police charging Mike, therefore, under the law, I have knowledge of a police officer, including the chief of police, of conduct on becoming an officer. And therefore, I will be, in essence, serving Mike with notice of a hearing. Tentatively, that hearing before the city council will be held on August 11th. That's the tentative date. Mike has not been served yet, but is, it is my intent that he be served soon. The, the way the law reads, once Mike is served with that notice of a hearing, the notice shall not be less than seven days nor more than 15. That's why he hasn't been served by me yet. We're trying to line that hearing up with that tentative date of August 11th. So that's the status of the chief. At this point, he continues to be on paid administrative leave. Next item, I think I mentioned to you, the first day that I became city manager, again, on November 18th, I received a phone call from John Labarge from the Byway Council telling me that the city was the recipient of a $376,300 grant to do the third phase of the Riverwalk Project, which is the continuation, if you will, of the sidewalk behind the Benton Building and a viewing platform and down to the river which connects with the, with the path along the river, which ultimately will connect to the trail that leads out through, through the valley. And I'm glad to report, now again, the date, they called me on November 18th. On July 20th, I received the grant agreement. Only took six and a half months to get that grant agreement. So now we can engage an engineer to make any changes to the documents, get this project out to bid. I was really hoping that this would be a 2009 project. I have not abandoned that at this point. I think there's still time for this, this to be a 2009 project, but obviously, we've, we've lost some time on that. Next item, I reported a little bit on delinquent taxes, about the status, and that is where we're at. We haven't run a report for a few days, Joan. I don't know how much money's been coming in the mail, but again, we did drop down to $40,000. There were two properties that I did put up for tax sale. One of the properties has been paid in full by the mortgage company, so obviously, that tax sale is off. The other property, I received a, I have an agreement with the property owner. I received about one-third of their obligation and I have a verbal agreement with the taxpayer that I would cancel, and I did. Pull the ad on the tax sale, provided the taxes were brought current 60 days within the, within the fiscal year, which is August 29th. So that's, that's where we're at. Everybody's received letters in the middle of June advising of the need to get current by the first installment of the fiscal year. So I'm hoping that we'll see some good, you know, some good numbers come, come August 15th. Watershed report, I, included in your agenda packet, this does not require any action. The, I spent some additional time, one of the things that we did, I explained this to- I spent some additional time, one of the things that we did, I explained this to Christine over the phone today, and to give just a little more detail about the watershed. For years, the watershed money was actually commingled with the rest of our funds, and by law, when the voters approve a reserve fund, it actually, it must be set up in a separate account. And so what I did, for two reasons, one is to follow the law. The law says it needs to be in a separate account, so let's put it in a separate account. But also, it's been problematic for that money to be commingled with the rest of our funds when trying to determine earnings. Because, you know, the earnings has to be apportioned, and there's all kinds of different investments that Joan had in that portfolio. And so I wanted to do is simplify it. And so we did simplify that on January 16th. And in doing so, I had to do an estimate of the earnings through that January 16th. And that was the report that I gave you a month ago. And since that time, I've taken my time to fully analyze the value of those funds, had they stayed commingled compared to separated. As you can see, the watershed fund actually did far more than the six percent. You can see, I think the number that I gave you before, based on those estimated earnings through January 16th, and the estimated earnings for June, we thought that that fund was going to make about twenty-two thousand and some change or something, twenty-two, seven. As it turned out, it made twenty-seven thousand dollars over the period. So it doesn't change relative to what comes out of the fund and into the recreation facilities, maintenance fund. That's fine. That sixteen thousand and some change is fine. Once that money arrives, Joan is calling for that money, we will immediately cut a check for six thousand dollars to the Sam Fishman Pool. So you can see, this fund actually has performed very, very well, and the difference between that sixteen and twenty-seven stays in the fund, continues to grow, so that we can do more recreational improvements in the future. The last item, Mike, I forgot to mention to you about the need for an amendment, for an agenda change, and I, time goes by very quickly at City Hall. But the fire contracts, when we approve the budget, obviously, we need to get these contracts out to the towns, so that they know what their share is, and, so they know what their share is, so that we can collect money to fund that. So what I've got, what this calculation is, as you'll notice, it's a similar sheet that you've seen before, relative to calculations. You'll notice the five-year payback, if you will, for Pantin, and the five-year phase for the credit for Waltham. So those are those calculations. I prepared two originals for each municipality, Ferrisburg, Pantin, and Waltham. The contract is identical to that which you signed a number of months ago, obviously, except for the dollar figure. Joan, you may want to give that to Andy, if you want. So I'd like the council to sign these agreements, so that we can get them in the mail.
So is each?
Oh, we've signed the names?
There should, yeah. Those are originals. There should be two from each town. And that's all I have there, Mike.
Excellent. Now we come to some sticky stuff here. We have to do some appointment. It probably won't, people won't give much thought in this first one. We'll actually give it a lot of thought, because we're kind of glad that you're back at the desk.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one motion for three jobs right now? Want two positions?
You may.
I would make the motion that we appoint Mel as city manager, Joan as city clerk treasurer, and Runcie as the city attorneys.
I have a motion in a second. I'll put it up for discussion. Not hearing discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Congratulations, or in some cases, condolences. So, oh, great. Okay, the next piece of business is appointing people to the planning commission and DRB. Somehow, we're going to take this separately, because we've got to do some, I've got to explain some stuff here. Planning commission, one individual I did not, or was unable to get in touch with, but I've talked to Mel, and we feel that they're planning some future exercises and involvement. So I really feel that they're really going to be doing that. So I would ask for a motion to appoint the following individuals for a 2010, 2011 tenure. Mark Hatler, Jason Farrell, Ivan Saint George. So could I have a motion on that?
Make said motion.
Second.
I think David got it out first. I have a motion in a second. Open for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. The Development Review Board, we got out of sync, so, and I've talked to the individual about this, somehow we just got out of, there's supposed to be four one-year, three the next. Well, somehow we got five and two. So to put it back in balance, I've talked to Peter Guerin, and I'd like to see a motion to extend Peter for one year, and then next year, we'll get him back on to two-year cycle. And then Brett Rynchowski?
Rakowski.
Rakowski, Jason Farrell, Mark Hatler, and Don Peabody, and Lowell, you're stuck. We're going to stick you out there for another two years, providing you get reelected. No, I don't think you're right.
No.
Nope. You're up next year. So I'd ask for a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Chris and David, open for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And please, everyone on the council, when you see these people, extend your thanks to them. I have done it in passing, but they have done a fantastic job over this, especially this last year, with everything that's happening. Really a lot of hard work. Okay. Got a phone call on this next one, item E, designation of the Bixby, the trustee for the Bixby Free Library. It actually runs from?
March to March.
March to March. So we're a little out of sequence, and we appointed Sherri Vaschan, and the annual meeting is in August.
Theirs is?
Theirs is.
Oh, really? Okay.
So at their next meeting, Sherri is actually, I guess, stepping down, and will be doing other things, and she has found a replacement, Chris Bradford, that has agreed to serve. So I would ask the board to officially appoint Chris Bradford as of August to be a trustee for the Bixby Memorial Free Library.
I will make said motion.
I will second.
David first, Lowell second. Open for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Agreement, social services voters, we get that done. That's passed around. Peddler's license done. Revised, done. Wow. Okay, Mel, you're up.
Yeah, I, basically, I'm not looking to go through this document here, but hopefully the board has had a time to review it, and if there's any, if there's any questions or anything about what we're trying to do here, this is something that John Demming and I, Mike Danels and their chair, Chris Cook, we had a meeting, trying to clarify these old agreements. And as a matter of fact, the water district board is meeting tonight as well, and they're reviewing this draft. So the intent is really not to finalize this tonight, so this is really for the board to just review, and I'm just looking for any comments as to, if there's any questions from the board as to what we're trying to do. You know, basically, we're trying to clarify this 1971 agreement. There's been a number, I think the agreement didn't reflect some connections right out of the gate, so, you know, I don't want to say that it wasn't done correctly in 1971. I think that the 1971 agreement, they just didn't recognize that there actually were a few other connections to the water system, not reflecting the agreement. So I'm not necessarily looking for board discussion and reaction on this tonight. I know, Christine, you sat on the board, you know, if you, so you may have a little closer-at-hand knowledge of some of these matters, so if you want to send me an email with any of your comments, that'd be fine. If anybody else has any comments or questions about anything here, or where we're trying to head, you know, please give me a call. I'm waiting to hear what their board is. I will tell you that for this building here, you know, if there's one thing that's been kind of under dispute here, is relative to this building, about whether or not the intent of that agreement was to provide free water to this event center. The way this is drafted, we have been paying water for this building for a number of years. Under this agreement, we would be paying for some water above, you know, some agreed-upon usage. Part of the problem is, the old agreement made reference to giving free water, but it said that we needed to, I can't remember the exact word, but basically, be careful with the use, and not be wasteful of the use. And to me, having a sentence that speaks about, "Don't be wasteful," you know, we have a meter, let's agree on a meter reading, and if we use more than a meter reading, we pay. You know, regardless of whether or not we waste it or not, let's just tighten up, so we aren't in some disagreement about what that agreement meant. So what this document is trying to do, is trying to just clarify the situation, so that there's no questions subject to somebody's interpretation, subject to somebody's story, somebody's understanding, somebody thought they got permission, sometimes they think they didn't get permission, so we just want to just tighten it up for future reference. So I don't know what, so again, you know, feel free to get in touch with me about, if you have any questions. I'm going to wait to hear from John Demming in the morning as a result of discussion from their board.
Any other questions? If not, just a quick recap, as Randy said, last Saturday was a big success. Mother Nature had something to do with it, a lot to do with it. Good turnout. Friday night, we enjoyed a very nice meal up here, and I learned how to do some Canadian square dancing, and I was not lame in the morning. I was surprised. Had a lot of fun, got a lot of comment, talked to people from Montreal, and as far north as Montreal, and as far west as Minnesota. They really love our city, they enjoy it, they plan on coming back and spending some of their money here. So that spoke well. I think every, I know that every boat at the dock was from Canada. Most of them were from Montreal. And there is a website up in Montreal about Virgin's and the dockage, and it's played out very well. So there'll be some more information coming forth about that at another meeting. So we hope the committee that's working on that can try to, see if we can expand that a little bit soon, get that rolling. So I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for an outstanding job that they did. It would be hard to name every individual that made this thing a success, but a majority of the credit goes to Marguerite Senical. How she does it, I'm not sure, but some extreme long days and a lot of hard work, and we'd like to thank Marguerite for her efforts. There is one note about this coming Saturday. Virgin's Rescue Squad is celebrating their fortieth anniversary. It'll be from 10:00 to 2:00 at the rescue station. They have a lot of different events. I will not be in town, so I'd ask each and every council member to try to stop by and wish them the best. So if you'd help me out in that respect, I'd appreciate that. And still seeing some improvements on the website, so if you have a chance, drop in there and check it out. And again, put the word out, excuse me, put the word out that if there are any events coming up, and you want to get them on there, get that information to us. So, Sunday night was the last night of the Falls being lit. Still having some technical difficulty with lighting. We, I would enjoy comments on whether it's something that we would like to try to see next year, because if we were, or people would enjoy it, positive information from the voters, we would have to see about figuring out how we were to support it. So I'd ask for a motion too, Joan. Lowell, Ziggy makes the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you very much.